The City of Waukegan is replacing about 20,000 water meters with a new automated meter, which provide for accurate, timely, and reliable reading without having to gain access to customers' properties. The new meters, which will be replaced at no cost to the customers, will be able to identify high water usage and potential leaks. In addition, customers will be able to access their water usage and account information conveniently online. The first thing you need to do is schedule an appointment with Professional Meters, Inc., to have your old meter replaced with a new automated meter reader, AMR for short. Look for a postcard in the mail with the call information or call (866) 270-9629. PMI will arrive at your scheduled time to install your meter. They will arrive on a truck or a van with a PMI logo. The PMI installer will have on a shirt or a jacket with a PMI logo and will carry a PMI ID badge. Installers will also wear booties over their work boots to ensure they do not carry dirt, mud, or water into your home or business. The installation process should take less than 30 minutes. The installer will take a photo of the old meter to obtain a record of your final meter reading and the condition of the pipes and fittings. The next step is to turn off your shut-off valves located on your water meter line near the meter. Remove the old meter and install the new AMR meter. The transmitter, which transmits your water usage data to the city, will be placed on a convenient location near the meter. The installer will take a photo of the new meter once it's installed. And that's it. The PMI installer will make sure everything is cleaned up, collect his tools, and head on to the next installation. You may receive a follow-up visit from a PMI manager to ensure your satisfaction with the installation and to make a quality control check of the meter installation. For more information about the Automated Meter Reading Installation Program, please visit If you have any questions regarding the meter installation, contact PMI at (866) 270-9629 or the City of Waukegan City Collector at (847) 599-2997.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the March 21st, 2016 City Council meeting. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Present.
Alderman Newsome.
Present.
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Alderman May.
President.
Alderman Velco.
Present.
Alderman Taylor.
Present.
Alderman Cunningham.
Present.
Alderman Seeger.
Present.
Please stand for the invocation and the pledge.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you again for another City Council meeting and thank you for this beautiful day in Waukegan. We ask that you continue to show your favor for Waukegan and bless us. Bless our mayor, bless this council, bless all the officials, so we may have a beautiful city in the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wrong side. Oh, look, it's the wrong one. It's supposed to be over here.
Who moved it?
Hey, if you think you're confused, I mean, I was ready to dance. Under Mayor's comments, I was really looking forward to making a great announcement tonight about the Vet Fest, and I was asked to hold off until such time as each individual artist wants to make their own announcement on their webpage. We have a, to my pleasure, we have a national sponsor sponsoring the event. So there will be no cost, period. The national sponsor is picking up 100% of sponsorship for this event. And it's a major, major sponsor with worldwide affiliation. So I'm sorry, I can't, Steve and I are elated. We want to tell somebody, if I were drinking and drunk, I'd probably tell you right now. But I can't do that. So, motion to approve the minutes of March 7th, 2016 by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman May. All's in favor?
Aye.
Resolutions, proclamations, presentations, appointments, Waukegan Main Street.
Good evening. Mark your calendars. Lunch with the mayor, May 9th at Glen Flora Country Club. Lunch will be served at 11:30 a.m. This year's format is different from previous years. Our guest speakers are Mayor Wayne Modley, Dr. Jerry Weber, President, College of Lake County, and Aaron Lawler, County Board Chairman. Our speakers will provide their insights into our downtown revitalization efforts and answer audience questions. For more information, please contact the Waukegan Main Street office at (847) 623-6650 or visit our website at www.waukeganmainstreet.org. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Item B, resolution urging the state of Illinois to finally pass their budget. I became a member of the Lake County Municipal League a month and a half ago, and one of the things that they urged us to do was pass resolutions urging the governor to get on with the business of passing the budget. Maria, would you please read the resolution?
Resolution 16R15, resolution urging Illinois state leaders to pass a final budget. Whereas the Constitution of the State of Illinois provides in Article 8, Section 2, that General Assembly pass a budget based on a proposed expenditures and estimated funds. And whereas the State of Illinois has been operating with a fiscal year 2016 state budget since July 1st, 2015, and whereas needed health and safety services and critical infrastructure services such as road construction, maintenance, and repair are negatively impacted by the lack of a state budget. And whereas the City of Waukegan and every other unit of local government is directly and indirectly adversely affected by the failure of the General Assembly to pass a budget. And whereas the city has done its part to meet its fiscal responsibilities and reduce expenses during and after times of economic recession. Included significantly reducing its workforce, maintaining balanced budget each year, and funding its pension obligations. And now there be it resolved by the President and Board of Trustees of the City of Waukegan Lake County, Illinois as follows. The foregoing recitals are incorporated into this resolution as findings of the President and Board of the Trustees. A copy of this resolution shall be forwarded to the Governor, Senate President, Senate Minority Leader, House Speaker, House Minority Leader, Lake County Municipal League, and Illinois Municipal League dated this 21st day of March 2016.
Motion's made by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Taylor. All's in favor?
Aye.
I will personally hand-deliver that to the governor. It's time that this budget gets passed. If we did that in Waukegan, I have to tell you, we would be paying all types of penalties and fines. And the state gets away with this nonsense. Madigan and Colleton need to get together with the governor and resolve this issue because it's really impacting the City of Waukegan substantially. Next is a resolution regarding the closing of the Amstead Expressway for the Vet Fest event in May. Maria?
Resolution, Amstead closure made 26th through 31st in 2016. Whereas the City of Waukegan and production company Vet Fest LLC closed the Amstead Highway to help manage the flow of traffic converging into, to attend Vet Fest 2016, taking place at the Waukegan Lakefront, starting at 9:00 a.m. on Thursday, May 26th, and ending at 5:00 a.m. on Tuesday, May 31st. And whereas this will require a complete closure of the Amstead Highway from Greenwood Avenue to Genesee Street during the event. And whereas the State of Illinois requires the City of Waukegan and the production company of Vet Fest LLC will assume the responsibilities and liability involving the closing of the Amstead Highway for this purpose. Now there it be resolved that the City of Waukegan and Vet Fest LLC will be responsible for the direction, protection, and regulation of the traffic during the time a temporary detour in this place. Now it be there resolved that a suitable boss copy of this resolution signed by the mayor and city clerk be sent to the permitted office of the Illinois Department of Transportation in order to give their authorizations for their closure dates this 21st day of March 2016.
Motion by Alderman Villalobos, second by Alderman May. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is a resolution for Lee England Jr. I was at Mr. England's event last night, and I have to tell you, he is a charming man. He is absolutely one of the most talented individuals I've ever met. A lot of us have heard of violin played. Well, you've not heard it played like he plays it. So please, Lee, would you step up front? Would you read the resolution, please? Maria?
Resolution, recognizing Lee England Jr. Whereas Lee England Jr. was born in Waukegan, and whereas Lee England Jr. began his musical curiosity in Waukegan public schools at the age of six when his parents gave him his first violin. And whereas Lee England Jr. is inspired by one of his greatest influences, Waukegan's own Jack Benny. And whereas Lee England Jr. pursued his education and currently has three music degrees, a BS in music education, BS in audio engineering, a BA in violin performance from Southern Illinois University. And whereas Lee England Jr. continues to pursue excellence as a soul violinist and serves as a positive role model for our youth, is an amazing spokesperson for the importance of a musical education in our schools, and is a proud ambassador for the City of Waukegan. And whereas Lee England Jr. has officially unveiled his partnership between his G. Lee's Love Notes Music Organization and the Genesee Theater. And now there be it resolved by the mayor and the members of the City Council of Waukegan, Illinois do hereby recognize Lee England Jr. for his dedication to his art and for his firm commitment to our community. Be it that fairer resolved that a suitable boss copy of this resolution signed by the mayor, the city clerk, be presented to Lee England Jr. at his Black Tie Gala on Sunday, March 20th at the Genesee Theater and again at the City Council meeting the 21st day of March 2016.
Well, Lee. Well, everyone, unbeknownst to Lee, he received another award today. Lori Nierheim, would you please make that known to the public?
Good evening. My name is Lori Nierheim and is Chair of the Waukegan Arts Council. It is my great privilege to present the 2015 Kate Corry Award to honor an extraordinary Waukegan artist who has served as an ambassador for our community in his or her travels as a working artist. This award is named in honor of the famous artist, frontierswoman, and anthropologist Kate Corry, who was born in Waukegan, Illinois in 1861. She is best known for her pioneering work documenting in photographs and on canvas the native peoples of the American Southwest a little over 100 years ago. Kate Corry is considered one of the West's most famous artists, and her paintings are in the collections of the Smithsonian Institution as well as the Waukegan History Museum. You may recall that last year, we presented the inaugural Kate Corry Award to David Dallason for his cultural curiosity and artistic talents. David is an artist who travels around the world, and he has traveled through more than 35 countries in the last number of years to paint the people and landscapes of those countries. And he always comes back to Waukegan. So on behalf of the Waukegan Arts Council and the City of Waukegan, we present the 2015 Kate Corry Award to Lee England Jr. for his remarkable musical talent and Waukegan ambassadorship. And I want to just share a little about Lee's story. I know you all heard the resolution from the mayor, but it's truly inspirational. He was born and raised in Waukegan and began his musical journey at age six. After earning three music degrees and through a lot of hard work, dedication, and commitment, he pursued his dreams. He's a well-known violin virtuoso, known as the Soul Violinist, playing in nearly every style, including classical, pop, hip-hop, and jazz. At the age of 25, he was performing alongside Stevie Wonder, one of my all-time favorites. While on a national tour, England performed at a private party for Michael Jordan's birthday. Jordan was so impressed with the performance that he offered Lee an endorsement with his Jordan Shoe brand to support his artistic endeavors, becoming one of only four non-athletes to represent the brand. Michael Jordan says Lee England Jr. is the Michael Jordan of the violin. Lee now lives in Los Angeles and is managed by the legendary record producer and Grammy Award winner Quincy Jones, who we heard from last night, who says Lee England Jr. is a remarkable talent that comes by very rarely, creating original and unique music straight from his soul. His imagination and musical innovation speaks to all of us, reinforcing that music is indeed a universal language. He is an elite musician, composer, and artist, and someone who cares deeply about helping to inspire and teach young people and to help them to love music and to perform. We are delighted to have him back in Waukegan and to unveil his new partnership, which I hope he'll talk a little bit about. But please give a warm welcome to Lee England Jr.
Face the camera, guys.
I mean, I really don't know what more to say than that, but I appreciate everyone for actually stepping up and supporting my event last night. The partnership with the Genesee Theater is going to blossom into something that is incredibly beautiful for the community. I truly believe that it is my plight and my mission to give back to Waukegan first, but then globally. I just wanted to know, you know, how much the city was going to support me in bringing my talents home first, and they showed up and they showed out in such a way that, just watch what I do with the love that you all have given me. So it's going to be incredible. I was actually in with some students earlier today. I'll be with students tomorrow. I'll spend as much time as I can with them before I go back to LA and just letting them know that I'm here. So we're going to do some incredible things.
I think that's one of our biggest successes right there, ladies and gentlemen. Next is the Labor Relations. We met today at 5:30. On the agenda was the, I'll go item by item. First item was Section 10-1, Civil Service Commission Secretary Compensation Adjusted. We're going to, the vote was to compensate our Civil Service Secretary $5,000 a year, two payments each in $2,500 increments. Second was the allowance compensation for the city clerk, an extra $1,000 per year for her parking responsibilities. That was 10.3. That passed as well. Monthly expenses for the, monthly expenses for the treasurer from 200 to 250. Educational benefits, Section 15, has been adjusted and decreased five years of continuous service with the city beyond completion of reimbursement. A casework of three years to be consistent with the union agreements. In addition, a continuing education section has been removed. This portion has not been used since implementation in 2012. We adjusted the police management specific sections to remove overtime pay, compulsory pay, court time, regular monthly court dates, overtime compensation, and callback pay sections. This section is exempt under the Fair Labor Standards Act. Fire department management specifications removed overtime, 24 hours, shift personnel. This group is exempt under the Fair Labor Standards Act, FLSA. This category no longer qualifies. Under Vacation Cashout section was removed and added to Section 3.4 of the ordinance, vacation cashout, non-union salary. Item A, Appendix A, and Appendix B recommended a 2% increase across the board for all non-union personnel. This is consistent with every union contract we sign. Corporation Council and I negotiated the last six contracts. No one in the city got more than 2%, nor will the non-union employees. So that was passed in committee. And we did some cleaning up with the title adjustments. The Risk Manager title has been adjusted from Tier Four to Tier Three and has been renamed Director of Risk Management. The Fire Special Project Analyst title has been renamed as Special Project Analyst and will remain in Tier Five. Section, the title of Assistant Planner and Park Administrator has been changed to Senior Planner and moved from Tier Six to Tier Five. The Telecommunications Supervisor has been moved from Tier Six to Tier Five. The Benefits Coordinator title at Tier Six has been changed to HR Generalist. And the Executive Assistant to the Mayor has been removed from Tier Six. So the motion will read this way. Motion to adopt ordinance amending Section 15027 and ordinance fixing salaries and wages to be paid to management and non-union employees of the City of Waukegan effective May 1st, 2016. The only exception to that would be Item 10-1, which allows compensation of $1,000 to our municipal clerk. Motion by Alderman Villalobos, second by Alderman Velco. Roll call, any questions on it, please?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I have a few, Your Honor.
I want to go back to Section 10.3, other compensation regarding the parking administrator stipend from three to 10. I remember when you made this decision to go there is because you said, Mayor, and I quote, "that the duties that I was doing at that time no longer warrants that administrator." So I'm trying to find out what, has something changed in the duty structure that warrants you to go from three back to 10?
No, we're not going back to 10, Alderman. We're going from $3,000 to $4,000 because our clerk has assumed a lot more responsibilities, not up to the $10,000 mark the committee agreed, but they did agree to compensate her an extra $1,000 a year for her additional duties.
All right, but it says to $10,000. That's what it says.
No, but that's what the adjustment was, 10.3. It was adjusted to, from $10,000 to $1,000. So it's going to go from, it's going to go from $3,000 a year to $4,000 a year, not $10,000. So it's a $1,000 increase for one year.
Just $1,000. What's it? What's it?
It's $3,000. No, it was. It was ordinance before the mayor took over. It was $10,000.
Right.
Then, I don't know if it ever checked. It was never changed out of the ordinance from $10,000. So what it should be is from $10,000 to now $4,000. That's what it should be.
It was changed from $10,000 to $3,000. If you remember correctly, Alderman.
Yes, sir.
When I was the clerk.
Yes, sir.
I worked every weekend for three years parking cars at the garage. The City Council sought to compensate me for that by increasing my salary, my stipend, from $3,000 to $10,000. When I took over, when I took the office, I hired someone to do those responsibilities. So therefore, I reduced it from $10,000 to $3,000. Now Maria has assumed.
No, Your Honor, if I'm not mistaken, when I came in as an Alderman, it was a $10,000 stipend as a parking administrator, period.
No, it was $3,000.
No, I'm just telling you what I remember when I was in labor relations. So it might have been changed in. So that's neither here or there. So we're going from $3,000 to $4,000. We're bumping that stipend up to $4,000.
Yes, $1,000 a year.
Yes.
Committee, the committee, if I may speak, the committee agreed to $1,000. It wanted a lot more, but a motion was made to increase it to $1,000, which passed.
That's correct.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to, I was reading it that way. So it's really from three to four.
That's correct.
And then the Police Management Specific section, it says now we are not compensating them for, we're removing the overtime pay, compensatory pay, court time, all that's being removed from, when we say manager, we're talking about supervisors on down?
We're talking about management personnel.
So it would be, it would be anybody not.
Police Department, it says Police Department Management.
It's the personnel in the Police Department who are not required to work overtime, the chiefs, the non, the non.
Right, 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 right. So I know they're not required to work overtime, but if they did work overtime, we didn't pay them anyway, did we?
No, they're on a salary.
Right. So we're removing overtime pay, court time.
We're cleaning up that section, Alderman.
Oh, you cleaned it.
That's all we're doing.
All right, because I was going to say, we.
Before, for instance, my salary is my salary. I work 20 hours a day, I get paid for my salary, whatever.
Right.
Same thing with the Police Department. They're on a salary. If they don't come to work, they get paid. If they work 20 hours, they get paid their salary. We just cleaned up that section of the contract because it wasn't clear.
Okay, so, but again, I'm going to go to my original question. That's for supervisors, some sergeants on up.
Tamika?
It would be, it would be for anybody non-union.
Commanders, deputy chiefs.
Chief, deputy chief, commanders are not union either. So those people in the Fire Department would be the chief and the deputy chief and battalion chief.
These are for the folks who did not go and unionize who's part of management.
Right.
All right, then. All right, no need to explain. I mean, I'm just trying, I want to make sure I get it.
Yeah, basically, what we did, we removed the information that was in the past salary ordinances. The deputy chiefs, the chiefs, the battalion chiefs, the commanders, they're all exempt under Fair Labor Standards Act. Therefore, they do not qualify for anything over their regular earnings and regular hours.
Unless they unionize.
Well, they can't unionize.
Lieutenantments and sergeants.
No, they're not.
I understand.
Right.
I understand that.
Those are exempt, but they can earn overtime. But our deputy chiefs, battalion chiefs, commanders, chiefs, they do not earn overtime.
The only reason I mention that, some years back, there was talk in the state, they were going to give, pass some type of law that would allow certain upper management to unionize. That's why I'm asking.
Correct.
I think I was, this was maybe four or five years ago, there's something being introduced because that's when a lot of things was going on. So that's why I'm asking. So these are for those non-union supervisory levels. Okay.
Right.
And that same thing with Fire Department as well.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just a statement for the Alderman. This is city overtime, sir. If they have outside employment, it doesn't include.
Oh, I know that. That goes without saying.
Well, I'm talking about outside police work is what I'm saying. If they're hired by the Park District, if they're hired by Vet Fest, if they're hired by Ravinia as a Waukegan police officer, not, they're authorized to have overtime, as long as somebody else pays.
That doesn't come from us anyway. And that does not count towards, on that question, Alderman, that doesn't count towards their salary, those monies outside, does it?
Correct.
And I'm speaking from a, from a what's-its-name standpoint.
It's added to it.
Right.
Right. I'm sorry?
It's added to it.
I know it's added to the paycheck because we get the money from someplace else, but that, those, that type of money does not count towards their annual...
Absolutely.
No, it doesn't go on their base, it doesn't go on their base pay, no.
I'm sorry, pitching now because they can rack up...
Thank you, thank you. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? If not, a motion by, the motion will be, motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Valco to approve them. Okay. Motion to adopt an ordinance, sixteen, amending ordinance fifteen oh twenty-seven, and ordinance fixing the salaries and wages to be paid to management and non-union employees of the city of Waukegan effective May one, two thousand and sixteen. Now, in that motion, there will be an exception, and that will be ten point three, move the, move the compensation for the city clerk from three thousand to four thousand, and that will be the only change in that motion. Is that clear with everyone?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so Maria, please, roll call, please.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Thank you. Finance Committee, Alderman Valco.
Thank you, your honor. Most of you in the audience know that the city has a CONNECT or a CTY program that it's called a reverse one-one program where if there's an emergency such as a tornado or a big snowstorm, any crime in the area, if you have to boil your water, whatever, the city uses a reverse nine-one-one auto call to notify you of that. So the, this evening, the Finance Committee recommended authorizing the Information Technology Director to renew the CONNECT CTY license for the two thousand and sixteen with a Blackboard Incorporated in an amount not to exceed thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars and thirteen cents, funded from line item five-five-five dash nine-one-five-nine-two-four four-three-eight, and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
The city desktop computers have not been replaced for over eight years. So the IT director would like some money to replace these desktop computers, and we're going to do it in a four-year span, twenty-five percent every year for the next four years to replace desktop workstations. So the committee recommends authorizing the Information Technology Director to enter into an agreement to replace desktop workstations in various city departments for an amount not to exceed forty-six thousand dollars. Funding is available from various departments, line items one hundred dash one-zero-three-zero-two five-four-seven-eight through five-five-five dash nine-one-five-nine-two-five-four-seven-eight, and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
The city of Waukegan, along with other municipalities, gets one hundred dollars per resident for a volume cap for future projects. Since Waukegan on, on the listings has around eighty-nine thousand, eighty-nine thousand residents, a little over, Waukegan's share will be about eight point eight million dollars. And what we do, Lake County Partners is part of an organization that runs a clearinghouse out of Buffalo Grove, Illinois. BG Buffalo Grove does not get the money. They're a clearinghouse, just like Pricewaterhouse or anything else. So when Waukegan and Lake County Partners need some money, they go to, Lake County, excuse me, they go to Buffalo Grove and to this clearinghouse for projects. So this evening, the Finance Committee recommended adopting a resolution reallocating two thousand and sixteen volume cap to the village of Buffalo Grove, Illinois, and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
The Police Department, when it wants to train their officers, they have a marked northeast multi-regional training, northeast multi-regional training facility, several facilities. They could be in Cook, it could be Kane, it could be Lake County. And you have to pay per officer to go to that facility. Well, the fire chief would like to have a training facility here in Waukegan. So he's asking to set up a separate fund, a revenue fund, aside from the Fire Department budget, to train recruits here in Waukegan. So the Finance Committee recommended adopting a resolution to formally create a special revenue fund for fire service training, and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
That's all I have, your honor.
Thank you, Alderman Valco. Public Works Committee, Alderman Newsom, please.
Thank you, your honor. Public Works met this evening. Our first item, item A, Public Works Committee recommends, and ISO move, that we authorize the proper city officials to enter into a contract with Echo Clean Maintenance of Chicago, Illinois, for an annual amount not to exceed eighty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Funds for this contract are available in line item one hundred, nine-one-zero-six-two-four four-one-zero.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Moiseo. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Item C, Public Works Committee recommends, and ISO move, that the proper city officials, authorize the proper city officials to execute a change order in the amount of seventy thousand, seventy thousand and three dollars for additional work payable to Caponella and Sons of Wildsworth, and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Moiseo. Roll call, please, madam clerk. Your honor, real quick, what's the change order for? Who's Tom? Tom? Tom?
I know it's a good explanation, it's just my habit, everybody.
Mr. additional pipe, we run into unforeseen issues on that project over, additional pipe, additional hole, additional, actual additional asphalt.
Okay, yeah. Caponella is awesome. They, I mean, they've always come through for us, man. And they know our roles very well, right, Tom?
Very well.
Yes, there's always a lot of our professionals.
Yeah, they know our roles, right? Thank you, Tom.
Roll call.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Item E, authorize, motion to recommend that the city council authorize the proper city officials to draft specifications and advertise for bids for the two thousand and sixteen road resurfacing program, and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Moiseo. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Item G, motion to recommend that the city council authorize the proper city officials to award the two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen water plant annual materials to the vendors as presented and highlighted in your packet.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Moiseo. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Item H, motion to recommend that the city council authorize the proper city officials to award the public works uniform contract to the low bidder, Lechner and Sons of Mount Prospect, Illinois, for an amount not to exceed twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents per year, effective May first, two thousand and sixteen through April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. Funds for this contract are available in the following line items. Line item one zero zero, nine one zero, six two four, four three nine. Line item five five five, nine one three, zero two, four, four three nine, and line item five five five, nine one five, five two, four four three nine, and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Moiseo. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Item G, motion to recommend that the city council authorize the proper city officials to award the two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen water plant annual materials to the vendors as presented and highlighted in your packet.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Moiseo. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Item H, motion to recommend that the city council authorize the proper city officials to draft specification and advertise for bids for sludge removal at the water plant, and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Moiseo. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Voice.
Oh, I'm sorry, voice vote. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passes.
That's all, your honor.
Thank you. Economic Development Committee, Alderman May, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The Economic Development Committee met this evening, and the committee would like to recommend approval of the agreement with Edgewater Resources LLC as consultant for the Waukegan Beach Management Plan in the amount of thirty thousand dollars, covered entirely by grant number NOAA thirteen zero three twenty-one, and ISO move. Can I give it real quick?
Yeah, it's just IDNR grant.
Yeah, so the, the grant is from NOAA but flows through the IDNR. They are paying a hundred percent. It's not, no, there is not city money we'll be reimbursing. But the, this is, this is just digging deeper into the lakefront active implementation plan that we, the council approved earlier this year. And now we're getting down to the, the specific details of habitat management, sand management, and beach and recreational management, so that we have a very professional plan of action for when we want to do sand management, if we want to have an event down there, if we're gonna, how we're gonna maintain and preserve the dunes, and, but also how we can look both environmentally and economically at our lakefront and maintain the beach accordingly, if anyone, and that's it. So ISO move.
Also, this year, Tom Haggerty had an extra fifty thousand dollars in his budget. So Tom and I had a discussion. If you go down to the lakefront today, you'll notice a large indentation in the, in the asphalt. Tom's, Tom's crew has put in a bioswale in conjunction with what Edgewater wants us to do. We've done that on our own. He's also putting the knockouts for the food trucks for this summer. So that will be done before, before May, thanks to Tom and his efforts and his generosity and his budget. And we're following Edgewater's plan to the T on this project. So our lakefront will start developing right away, hopefully. So, motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Valco. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
of payroll dated March 18th, 2016, in the amount of $1,428,774.88, and the final payout dated March 18th, 2016, in the amount of $11,078,31 cents. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villa Lobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Seeger.
Aye.
Item B, approval of bills dated March 21st, 2016, in the amount of 500, 659,687 cents. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villa Lobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Seeger.
Aye.
Item C, accept and place on file the monthly treasury report for the month of February 2016. Motion by Alderman Villa Lobos, second by Alderman Seeger. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item D, per Treasurer John Schwab, accept and place on file a memorandum discussing the EPA approval reduction of the city's financial assurance, FA, letter of credit, LLC, from $2,500,000 down to $1,405,000. The city annual fee will now be $14,041, with renewal date of July 18th, 2016.
Mayor, if I can explain, I explained to the city council, and I certainly'd like to explain to the public. The letter of credit was required when our finances were in shambles. Our finances have been in great shape for the last five years or, five years or so, and we should not be obligated by the EPA, we're required by the EPA. It's the Yeoman Creek Remediation Group that we report to. Our finances are such that we should not be obligated for even the reduction. That was because the money from the OMC bankruptcy was split among the holders. So that reduced it from the 25,000, 2,2500, 25,000 down to whatever, because the amount that we owed was 2.5 million. So the letter of credit, the credit was, was less. So that's why it's been reduced. But we should not even have this obligation if the EPA, whatever. We've petitioned for two years now, okay, to show them that our financials. And I just want the public to know that our financials are such that we should not be obligated for this time of money, last year or this year. It's a $14,000 a year expense that we should have to pay, and is doing, is doing no one any good. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. A motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Moiseo. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. There are no ordinance or resolutions. Audience time, Michael E. Jones, 1429 12th Street.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I have a couple of items that I'd like to bring to your attention. One of the first items is about, in November of last year, we had, I think, a storm, it might have been a windstorm, I'm not sure what it was, but it knocked down three lines. And I was going, and my daughter called me. I told her, well, the best thing I know to do was call the fire department, because I didn't know what line was down. They came out, they found out that it wasn't high tension wire, they didn't belong to them. So then, I had to call around, because I didn't know what it was. And I called, come, I called the cable company. And they sent someone out, probably on the 30th of the month. And the gentleman that did come out, he told me that he couldn't do anything with the lines, because they were running through my yard, on my fence, and in the tree, and I'd have to trim the trees before they could do anything. Then, I called my Alderman, and my second ward Alderman, and my Alderman, Patrick, he's doing a great job. I just have to take off my hat for him, he's worked so hard for me. Anyhow, the wires are down right now. A couple of weeks ago, he called me and told me that the, the phone company, I believe, the wires belonged to them, and they were gonna put them up the next day, because they'd been down so long or whatever. And when I left home, the wires were still down right now. I, Comcast did come out and put up the wires, three wires down. Comcast came and wrapped the wire up and just hung it up, but that was okay, because I knew that they knew what they were doing. But the problem that I'm having is the wires are hanging down now across my property. I've got a tree that I need to work on, I've got the front that I'd like to clean up, and I didn't know what to do about that, because I didn't want to be out with the wires, and I didn't know what they were. So, the Alderman found out that they were telephone wires going to the next door home, which is vacant, and so, I don't know if that's why they've been laying so long, but I don't feel that their company is doing us right by leaving them now. It's a lot of children that catch a bus, the school bus comes out in our street, and they catch the bus right there at 12th and Washington Park. And the only reason I figured that the children having mess with the wires is on kind of the weather. The snow had them covered for a little while, but now, for the last two or three weeks, they've been open, and nobody's did anything with them. And I figured, when you see something wrong, and you call it all in, and you do all you can, and the Alderman do all can, what can you do other than to come to the council, make them aware, or the city officials, to make them aware of your problem? That's why I'm here tonight, that is one of the things that I'd like for those to be corrected. The next thing is, I'm having a problem, I've been living there for almost 40 years. Coleman Cable hasn't been there that long, but they've been there a pretty good little while, and my problem is, one of the problems is trucks using-
Sir, that's, that's your time.
All right, okay, well, thank you.
I will, I will make a phone call for you tomorrow morning, and you're at 1429 12th Street?
Yes.
Okay, if you'll leave me your number, I'll, I'll call you tomorrow.
All right, thank you.
Okay? Thank you, sir. Mr., Mr. Blanks?
Mr. Blanks, Mayor, a couple of issues that concerns me, if you can recall, a few months back, when I came here before the council, regarding, when you had made a call to one Dr., Ms. Harris, and that was when you was calling her, and kind of threatening, intimidating, if you will, to give up her position on the Waukegan Library Board without there being any approval or even speaking with the council on that matter. One of the things that, the reason I'm bringing it up, because, you know, obviously, the library business is germane to city business. Now, what I want to also bring up is that there was an employee at the Waukegan Library Board, at the Waukegan, who held a position as far as a human resources. Now, that particular, that particular employee, if you will, she didn't like the way things was transpired as far as her dismissal. She presented a $65,000 settlement to the Library Board. The Library Board paid out $65,000 of the taxpayers' money, and I don't know if the members of this board was made aware of it. You can correct me if I'm wrong, but there was a $65,000 settlement that was pushed up on, that was pushed or imposed up on the Library Board, and that $65,000 was paid out, correct me if I'm wrong, that was a lady by the name of Ms. Cindy Joy, and I, if I'm wrong, let me know, I think she's some relations to our treasurer. But however, my point being, I don't think it came before this board, and I don't think the community was made aware of it, and surely, if you put it on the floor here to try to get rid, to try to dismiss Dr. Harris, and you went public to try to do so, surely, something of this magnitude should have been came before the board, and surely, the members of the public and the taxpayers of, this $65,000 was paid out, allegedly, I'll give you that, was paid out, was not made aware of that particular incident. Number two, police in our schools. I made mention of this before, you made mention that our school system is failing. So if the police being there, obviously, they are part of the problem and the failure. And when I look at the number of sexual, alleged sexual assaults and inappropriate touching that has went on in our school district while the police was, while the police was actually there on campus, if they are not there as a part of the problem, as helping to protect our kids, I don't really think we need the police there, especially when you're talking about increasing the money.
Mr. Rodes?
Good evening. Voya hablar en español y me va a traducir. ¿Quién dijo que voy a traducir?
What happened?
Translate.
Translate.
Mi nombre es Luis Rodes, dueño de un negocio en el 1709 de la Gran.
He's the owner of a business on Grant Avenue.
Okay.
El año pasado tuvimos una reunión con el señor alcalde.
Mr. They had a reunion with, with the mayor?
Referente al problema que afrontamos.
Regarding the problem?
Con los personas sin casa o homeless.
Regarding the homeless.
Que se mantienen en la cara, en la calle, pidiendo dinero, molestando a las personas que visitan nuestros negocios.
That these, these homeless people are asking for money around the businesses?
En muchas oportunidades he visto como los niños cuando van en la calle hacia la escuela también tienen que cruzarse de un lado a otro de la calle, porque están los jóvenes en la calle y-
Because the, the school kids are crossing to the other side of the, of the streets, so they won't approach them.
Asimismo hemos sufrido de, de invasiones a nuestra propiedad por estas personas quienes entran y hacen sus necesidades.
They feel like they've been invaded by the homeless people in, around the neighbors, around the businesses?
Y el señor alcalde nos dijo que ellos iban a estar dentro del edificio en esa oportunidad.
¿Qué era, qué era la dirección?
1709 de la Gran. Estoy enfrente del edificio del Pats.
709, right.
En las mañanas he podido observar que a las 6:30 de la mañana llegan tres buses.
He says that there's three buses that come at 6:30 in the morning.
Sí, y ellos bajan aproximadamente entre 20, 30, y hasta 40 homeless.
Between 20 to 40 homeless.
De todo Lake County, no es de Waukegan, es de todo Lake County.
All, all Lake County and just Waukegan?
Yeah. Los buses se van.
The buses leave.
Y nos dejan a ellos hasta las 6:30 de la noche o 7:00 de la noche regresan por ellos.
And the homeless are there till 6:30 at night, then the buses come back and pick them up.
Eh, y nos dejan a nosotros, los jóvenes todo el día.
So they're out all day long.
Tell him, tell him to come see me in the morning, I'll, I'll work with the, the community police officers on that.
Dice el mayor que usted puede venir en la mañana, a hablar con él en la mañana a su oficina. El problema es que, que los jóvenes no se van a estar diez horas dentro de ese edificio. Sale. Mañana en la mañana si, si me das su número de teléfono, y mañana puede venir a ver al, al mayor a su, a su oficina.
Margaret Carrasco? Margaret Carrasco, please, Margaret, you're up.
Mayor.
You're not, you're not speaking.
Ms. Ms. Ms.
You're not speaking. You weren't here at 7:00.
Listen, I came here to say that.
Margaret?
Margaret?
Margaret? No, you didn't. Go ahead.
Good evening, my name is Margaret Carrasco. I reside two blocks from the Pats homeless site, which is also one block away from the Whittier Elementary School. Tonight, Mayor, I brought a photo of the evidence which Mr. Rodes was referring to. The photo there, if you could please pass it out to each of the person, is one of the three buses that comes every single day to the city of Waukegan, bringing homeless people from other towns. I support that we have a responsibility to homeless people that reside from Waukegan. Waukegan takes care of our own people. It is not our obligation to take care of homeless people from all over Lake County. When Pats originally applied for their business license, and George Torres, we spoke about this, and you know this very well, they noted it was an administrative site, no problem. That's a lie. They, every day, have homeless people there, all different kinds of services, they come there to shower, they come there to dispense drugs to them. You can walk around the whole neighborhood and you find drugs inside, you find drugs outside. Mayor, I was here previously, if you recall, about my senior citizen neighbor who lives right off of Lydia, Ms. Gracie Hager, an outstanding Waukegan senior citizen. She's died now. She, it was so traumatic for her to find, open up her window on July 4th and see two homeless people laying across her front yard. The resources of the city of Waukegan, we're talking about saving money? Huh, you need to save money right here, this'll do the whole budget. Our resources from the fire department, ambulance, police department, every single day are babysitting this one particular site. That's unfair to the residents of Waukegan. Mayor, I voted for you. I voted for you to improve Waukegan, not to destroy it. We will not stop, we have plastered that picture to 10,000 residents, and we're not gonna stop. Mr. Rose, we already have 20 businesses, we'll be here next time, this is not fair. I propose that those three buses, 150 homeless residents, there's a large parking lot, right behind your house, Mayor, let's have that bus go and drop off those homeless people that urinate in our yards, leave garbage, harass us, begging for money, every single day, we should not have to put up with that, thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Colton?
Alderman, I want to know, is there anything in writing or in policy saying that I, that I have to sign in? Or are we making rules up as they go? Can any officer please address me?
You have to be present, please sit down.
Is that in writing? Is that, is that in writing?
Sit down.
Is that in writing? Is that in writing, or are you making up rules as we go? Just answer the question and I'll sit down.
Would you sit down, please, Mr. Peterson?
Is that in writing, or are we making up rules?
You have to be present to sign in.
Is that in writing anywhere?
You have to be-
Is that in writing anywhere?
Chief, would you please, would you please escort him out of here?
Is that in writing anywhere? This is a question that I'm asking.
Mr. Peterson, you're out of order.
Is that in writing?
You are out of order.
My name was on the list. Is it in writing? Is it in writing?
Your Honor, gentlemen, gentlemen. Escort him out of here.
Is it in writing?
Chris. Chris.
Is it in writing? Are you making it up as we go? That's my question, and I will sit down after you answer it.
Chris, I can answer that.
Answer it.
That's been the policy, I've been here, God, many, mutual years, and it's been the policy that you sign in at 7:00, and you're here for the original meeting, and I think, I think it's important, not just to come to voice, but also to hear the procedure that go on in, in the city and be part of it. And we welcome to, to hear your complaints, we really do. I don't know if you're, you're not, whatever ward you're in, I'm sure your Alderman would be glad to hear them. I'm always glad to sit down with anybody and, and hear their concerns for the city. But I think, you know, why don't you come here, sign in when you're, be here for the, for the whole meeting, so you realize what's going on in the city, and be, be part of the community. But just to come here and complain, it's not the real way.
I'm not complaining, so you're on record, so you're on record saying, so you're on record saying this is in writing. You're on record for saying that, Alderman Tempest, correct?
No, no.
Am I right? Can I ask you that? So you're on record.
Sit down or leave, Mr. Peterson.
So you're on record saying that it's in writing, correct?
He didn't say that, I'm not answering that, okay? He didn't say it.
That's all I wanted.
All right, no, let's go.
So we're making up rules?
Are you done making ass out of yourself? Sit down, okay?
You asshole. He called me an asshole. Quit touching me, I'm under arrest.
Ralph, Ralph, Ralph. Kathy, Kathy Colton? Ralph, Ralph. Kathy?
Move the audience back to the end.
Kathy? Kathy? Ralph. Ralph. I don't think you can follow that, Kathy, but try. Ralph. Ralph. Gentlemen. Margaret. Margaret. Okay. Go ahead, ma'am.
Good evening, my name's Kathy Colton, I'm a seventh ward resident and a member of Clean Power Lake County. By now, I know that some of you have received our invitation, Clean Power Lake County's invitation, and I hope that all of you have, to a luncheon that we're holding to discuss renewable energy opportunities in Waukegan on Thursday, the 31st, at the public library. We hope that you'll all be able to join us, and if you haven't received the invitation, I have extra copies of it here, and would be happy to give some to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman's time, Alderman's time, Alderman's time.
Alderman Moiseo.
Alderman Moiseo. Alderman Moiseo. No, sit down, sit down. Alderman Moiseo, please. Come on, guys, sit down, please, come on.
All right, a couple of things, we talked about it in Public Works Committee, Alderman Cunningham brought it to my attention, thank God, about the Swelco situation. Tom said they voted 26 to 1 to do away with electronic recycling, but he's trying to work on, work on some things that we can maybe keep in at Public Works, if I understood him correctly. I've always been a big supporter of Swelco. Alderman Tempest is not. It's starting to go the way of Alderman Tempest. We don't have $35,000 a year to pay for a service that we're not gonna get out of Swelco. Alderman Tempest has always brought up good points about that in the past about Swelco, and I've always defended and said, we need that service, especially a couple of years ago, we needed that service, because we knew it was coming down the road with all these electronics in TVs. And Tom does not have the manpower to run, have a crew run around picking up electronics off of alleys and parkways, we all know that. Every Alderman up here knows that. Before we had that place to bring recyclables, electronics, it was a mess. We don't have the manpower or the time to do it. So, with that, if Swelco's not gonna provide that service anymore, for whatever reason, because of the state, we're gonna have to think of something, but we can't continue to, to give Swelco $35,000 a year, all right? And that's all figured on residents and prorated by household and all that, so that people understand a little bit, and we're the biggest fish in the pond, we pay the largest portion to Swelco, I think. So, we need to look at that, we need to be mindful of that, because May 1st, it's, it's not gonna be around anymore. Second of all, Margaret, thank you for bringing that to our attention, we need to address that. It, it, it's one thing if we have our own walk on the streets, but we're, we're not taking everybody else's. Come on, people, we, we, we don't have the resources, we don't have the wherewithal, this is not, you know, we can't, we can't fix everybody's problems. So we need to jump on that, and jump on that quick, find out what's going on. I don't know if it's, maybe you revoke the license, I don't think it's a business license, they don't, not a business there, I don't know what they are, but we need to jump on that quick.
There we go. There's a fundraiser going on for the Waukegan Public Library. They got a partnership with Buffalo Wild Wings here in Waukegan. And if you do dining there from between now and May 29th, 10% of your bill will go to support the Waukegan Public Library. So there's flyers at the library. I have a couple myself, too, if you want one. Just libraries doing what it can to get some funds. And our library is actually, as you well know, is an award-winning library, you know, nationally recognized. And so they're just looking to offer, get more funding, to offer more programs to help the community out, which is wonderful. Secondly, I'd like to mention Rosati's opened up here, the one on Grand and Sheridan, which is exciting. I know for months, people have asked me, when's an opening? When's an opening? We've seen the sign there since last summer and it's open now. I've got to, I've actually swung by there about three times and residents are there, residents are excited about the place. I think it's a very nice establishment to have. And last, unfortunately, I didn't get to attend Lee Eglens' event last night. It sounds like it was wonderful. I briefly spoke to Lee, said it was a great time. But I do look forward to him bringing his talents to Waukegan and offering something for the youth. I'm all about children. I think, you know, that's our future. And I'm always interested in seeing what can be offered to help them move along in their life. So hoping to get an opportunity to meet with Lee before he goes back to California and just kind of get his vision better and help him where I can with that. So it's exciting, you know. And then bringing up the PADS situation, guys, if you call them at PADS, you can set an appointment really quickly. The director will meet us easily. So if you guys are interested, go check out PADS, see what they do, the busing. I'm kind of aware what that's about. So the way the operation works, the people that come to PADS at night, they're put, they're taken to three locations within Waukegan. And then in the morning, they come back from those locations to the PADS site. Some of them actually are there, some of them go out into the community, which is a concern, right, for us. Some of them are there actually to receive services. So PADS, they try to figure out solutions to get people away from homelessness. So some people will actually come there to get the services that they need to move along on this path to get away from homelessness. Some of them that are in that process, they're the ones that are in the community, right? And these are the ones that we're concerned about. So I think more dialogue with PADS to figure out what we can do for those individuals to get them not meandering around the community, not panhandling. It's something we've got to be working on, too. So I agree with you guys. You know, it is a concern. It is an issue. So I just want to mention that. That's it. Thank you.
Alderman Newsom?
Thank you. I wanted to touch on one thing here tonight about our automated water reading program. I know some people have probably received a blue card in the mail. That is the first notice. I did get a call from a young lady that was, well, didn't respond to the first card. The second card is yellow and the third card is red. And if you don't respond to the first one, they'll send you a second notice. And if you don't respond to that one, they'll send you a third notice. And if you don't respond to that one, there's chances that your water will be turned off. I bring this up because this little blue card sometime can be construed as some junk mail, and you might not pay that much attention to it and throw it out. But it is addressed to the owner of the home or the current resident. And on the back of it, I'll read what it says. City of Waukegan Automated Meter Reading Program. Water meter service notice number one. The city of Waukegan has contracted with Professional Meters Incorporated, PMI, to replace all city water meters. Every water customer will receive a new water meter at no cost. This project allows the city to be more efficient and provide improved water usage data to customers. Your water meter must be replaced. In most cases, the replacement can be completed within 30 minutes. All city water customers will need to have their water meter replaced. It says it again, please call PMI to schedule your own appointment. So you can call a toll-free number and they will work with you at your convenience to come in and replace your meter. The toll-free number is 866-270-9629, and it's also in Spanish. So when you, I think we're about 45% completed north of Grand. So if you live south of Grand, be on the lookout for this blue card coming in the mail. And when you get it, call and set up an appointment to have your meter changed out at no cost to you, and it only takes them a few minutes. And that's all I have.
Alderman Tempest?
I guess I'll speak on the Water Department a little bit, as you hear so much in regard to some other communities to the east of us and the serious problem they have with their water quality. I think Waukegan has one great thing going for us. That's our water plant and our Lake Michigan water, which is very, very well-processed and we really have good direction and charge down there. And I really thank the mayor for some of the appointments he made down there, and we've kept their water supply safe, and that's so important, especially if you see some communities, the effect it has if they don't have water. And water's going to be one of the important commodities that we have. You go to Southern California now, they're wondering where they're going to get their water for. The river's drying up. They're thinking eventually of making saltwater purifier. They do that in Aruba. They actually, Aruba is a desert nation, and their water is all from the sea, go through the process to make water. And I've been there once. It's delicious, really high-quality, but it's very costly. And we're blessed in Waukegan that we have Lake Michigan water. It's so important to keep our water supply up to date, which we are. Thank you.
Alderman May?
Thank you. I was going to pass tonight, but my heart's beating out of my chest, so I'm going to say something. I think we've really been on the right track at city council. I think we're doing a lot of positive things. Mayor, I respect the chances you're taking down at the lake, and you're putting yourself out there and making things happen for this community. I respect your courage and I respect your position very much. That said, I don't believe we've set up an exact protocol as far as signing up to speak during public comment. Not to my, and I was searching and I couldn't find it. But I do think that we need to be very careful, judging on our city's history, on not preventing our citizens from speaking at the council meetings, whether it's something that we deem, you know, we all have our different opinions about what's important and what's not important. But I do think it's very, very important that this body lets anyone and everyone who wants to address us, we have to give them that right. It's three minutes. Personally, when we moved audience time to the bottom of the agenda, I was going to offer up to people, I'll sign you up, so you don't have to sit here through the meeting, because I don't think it's our decision to make people sit through all of our business if they don't want to sit through all of our business. If they want to come and address the council and not sit through a zillion Public Works line items, I think that that's their right. So I'm not trying to cause conflict up here, but I do want to make my opinion on this public. I just feel that if people come here and want to address us, that we should allow them to do so, and that's all I have.
Alderman Velko?
Alderman Taylor? First, I'd like to remind people that it is time to start thinking about getting your stickers for yard waste. So start, April 15th is your time, so let's start thinking about that. Two, I represent several school districts. Two of them are out right now, that is Warren and Green Oaks, Libertyville. So if you are driving on the west side of Waukegan, please be careful that kids are out for spring break right now. Use caution when driving through those neighborhoods. Three, River Glen, that we've discussed here many times, has their grand opening on April 2nd and 3rd. So if any of you are interested in going out and seeing the model, some of us here have had the pleasure of seeing it, so if you'd like to take that opportunity and see it, please do so. And that's all.
Alderman Cunningham?
There's only three items that I have. The first one is I want to reiterate the, just follow up on Alderman Newsom's comments regarding this water meter replacement. I think we did an excellent job of starting on a side of, on the, on a part of town of the city where homeownership is more prevalent than it will be as we move south or southeast of our city. So those particular cards that are going to be issued to people might not get to in the right hands. And it's going to land up in the hands of people who are renting or maybe don't understand the importance of getting and setting that appointment. I think what was missed in Alderman's Newsom's comments, which was very helpful, and I hope they make our local newspaper, is that if you do not, I'm going to repeat, if you do not set this appointment and you miss the time, your water will be shut off and there will be a $100 fine. Now, we're not, and I want to make sure I'm saying this correct, Mayor, and I know George is back there, this is not to punish you or to penalize, however, we must get this process completed. Is that safe to say, George? Okay. The problem I think we're probably going to run into, because we're going to be dealing with those who are not the owners of the property. Yeah, you're not the owners of the property, so the eagerness to get it done sometimes is not there until that water's cut off. And I know, George, you've kind of had to, can, Mayor, do you mind if George kind of touched on that a little bit and how he's kind of working through that? Because I think it's important, this issue right here. Yeah, so, and we've talked about it, but I think it's important that we really talk about it in better dialogue. Go ahead, George, please.
Okay, and we do send out three notices. First notice is in blue to the occupant of the home. A week later, we sent a second notice with a different colored postcard, green. But that one, we sent it to the owner of the property and the occupants. So two mailings on the second notice. Third notice, the third week, we sent a harsh red notice to the occupant of the property.
Okay.
And then, if they don't respond, then, in the fourth week, Public Works will go out there and post a sign on their door saying they got four days to schedule an appointment.
Okay.
So the owner of the property do have notice on the second week.
Okay. And everybody, understand, it's going to be very resistant to waiving that fee because of the various notices that come out. And with the mere fact that Public Works is going door-to-door, similar to if they're out doing water main breaks and they posted, say, we're going to be resistant to doing that, because we need to get this done. It's going to be a savings to the city of Waukegan. So we want that to be very clear and upfront. Right, George? All right. And thank you, Alderman Newsom, for really pointing, I hope we can get this in the paper. If not, David, do what you do to make sure it gets out more, because I know what's going to happen. You're going to be calling those Southside Aldermen, talking about they shutting my water off. Well, you know, and this is in, if I'm not mistaken, George, this is within like a week and a half, two-week time span of these notices going out, correct? Yeah, yeah. So it's, you know, it's ample amount of time for this process to take place. I'm going to talk about this PADS deal. You know, I was leery of it. And I'm not a fan of it, to be honest, because I knew when PADS was leaving the VA, they were looking at North Chicago. They had a spot in North Chicago. I want to take us back a little bit. Downtown Waukegan, 1st Ward. We bought that building from PADS with the intent, the intent to get rid of that excess company walking up and down our streets. What do we do? We said, come on back, administration. I walked through there twice, that building. Washrooms, showers, sleeping. I don't know what kind of administration they're doing in there. And I have never seen PADS, this bus or any other bus drop off at PADS site, even when they were dropping off downtown Waukegan, it was always the blue bus. What it looks like to me, because the word "Lake County" is on there, that means every county, every city within the county that have some homeless people, you bring them to good old Waukegan, because our doors are open and we will hug you and nurture you the way we're supposed to, and nobody else want this in their backyard. But then we're going to beat up the chief, we're going to beat up code enforcement, we're going to beat up all of them, because you say they're not doing their job. They are doing their job, but we can't be everybody's dumping ground. We're already Chicago's dumping ground. They're giving them money to get on the train, to come up here, to get our services. So this needs to be rethink. This is not a processing center, an administration center. This is a place for people to go and sit around all day. And I am a patron of Hooked on Hair, where I get my haircut. I still got a little left.
Not for long.
Not for long. And the folks do walk up and down. Are they harmless? Yes, they are. But sometime, they can become annoying. And to the business people, I can understand the level of frustration. It's hard to get customers to come into business as it is, doing the things that you do. So to, you know, to have someone constantly asking you for something, most of the folks are nice, they give them dollars or whatever have you, but it can be somewhat frustrating. So I understand what you're saying. But I do believe we need to rethink, or they need to rethink, how they're going to minister their process over there, so it doesn't affect our business folks. That's me. And I think if you talk to some of the business people, they might agree. I had the distinct pleasure, on a much happier note, I had the distinct pleasure, and Larry, you might be the only one, man, you're probably the only one up here who can confirm this. I spoke with a former Alderman of the 1st Ward by the name of Marco Montano. Larry?
Marco who?
He said he was a former.
Oh, Montano.
Yes, Montano, yeah. And I didn't know. I didn't know he was. I took a picture with him, and it's Edwin Montano, is that his brother? Is that safe to say, Larry?
Edwin Montano, yes.
Yeah, that's his brother. So, yeah, Mayor, I saw him. I said, you should come to council meeting one day. It would be nice to see some of the, well, I didn't even know the man was an Alderman, so it dates me back, but, yeah, I thought that was very good, and I told him I would say that at council meeting. And I'm going to chime in on Alderman's maze about this public, about the public speaking. And I voted against us moving it, I just, I didn't agree with it. Second, I didn't even know that you had to be present to sign your name. I thought anyone can sign your name on the list in order to speak. That was my opinion. And if that's not, I do need to know now, and I think Corporation Council should let us all know, because I do instruct people to get here at a certain time to put their name on or make sure their name is on the list to speak. I never knew that you had to personally be here. And to Lisa's point, considering our history and going into court, Steve is one of the best attorneys you're going to find, but I don't want him going into court over First Amendment rights. It just, it's never good. So I think something needs to be established very, very quickly, as it pertains to not who can sign up now, is that what it is? Who can sign up? Who has to be here to sign up? Should their name just be on the list? I think we really, really need to make that clear, because we just don't need it. And at the end of the day, it's three minutes. Three minutes is not going to hurt any of us, in my opinion, unless you're having a heart attack. And Chief Bridges, I hope you guys are here quicker than three minutes to get us help, but.
I can attest to that.
Yeah, yeah. So I really think we need to look at this public comment thing, so we don't get into this confrontation. And I'm going to say this, I don't think our mayor or any councilman up here ever wants to restrict anyone. I'm saying this as Sam, not collectively. I don't think you, we ever want to restrict anyone from, you know, giving us input. That's what I call it, input, whether it be difference of opinion, but input. But I do believe that we all need a process that we can live by, and that it will help us hear your points, we can address them and move on. Yeah, yeah. So I really think we need to look at this public comment thing, so we don't get into this confrontation. And I'm going to say this, I don't think our mayor or any councilman up here ever wants to restrict anyone. I'm saying this as Sam, not collectively. I don't think we ever want to restrict anyone from, you know, giving us input. That's what I call it, input, whether it be difference of opinion, but input. But I do believe that we all need a process that we can live by, and that it will help us hear your points, we can address them and move on. Thank you. God bless.
Alderman Seager?
Motion to adjourn.
Second by, motion made in second halls in favor. Opposed, motion made in.
The city of Waukegan is replacing about 20,000 water meters with a new automated meter, which provide for accurate, timely, and reliable reading without having to gain access to customers' properties. The new meters, which will be replaced at no cost to the customers, will be able to identify high water usage and potential leaks. In addition, customers will be able to access their water usage and account information conveniently online. The first thing you need to do is schedule an appointment with Professional Meters, Inc., to have your old meter replaced with a new automated meter reader, AMR for short. Look for a postcard in the mail with the call information or call 866-270-9629. PMI will arrive at your scheduled time to install your meter. They will arrive on a truck or a van with a PMI logo. The PMI installer will have on a shirt or a jacket with a PMI logo and will carry a PMI ID badge. Installers will also wear booties over their work boots to ensure they do not carry dirt, mud, or water into your home or business. The installation process should take less than 30 minutes. The installer will take a photo of the old meter to obtain a record of your final meter reading and the condition of the pipes and fittings. The next step is to turn off your shuttle valves located on your water meter line near the meter. Remove the old meter and install the new AMR meter. The transmitter, which transmits your water usage data to the city, will be placed on a convenient location near the meter. The installer will take a photo of the new meter once it's installed. And that's it. The PMI installer will make sure everything is cleaned up, collect his tools, and head on to the next installation. You may receive a follow-up visit from a PMI manager to ensure your satisfaction with the installation and to make a quality control check of the meter installation. For more information about the Automated Meter Reading Installation Program, please visit If you have any questions regarding the meter installation, contact PMI at 866-270-9629 or the City of Waukegan City Collector at 847-599-2997.